Good morning.
Good morning.
It's Tuesday, September 28 at 10:01 a.m., and we're at the Assembly Hall at 901 Main Street in Conyers, Georgia. And so I will call the meeting to order this morning. And Pastor Smith was unable to be here this morning. And so our Director Dan Morgan is going to give our invocation and lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Good morning. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the wonderful weather and for us to be able to be here today to conduct a business that needs to make our community grow and run and operate. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom, in all that we do here today, and make sure that we are all doing this in your name and for the betterment of our community. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we always need that special prayer of guidance and wisdom.
And you got a thank you for the weather, which you wouldn't have gotten from me.
Yes. Yes. And yes, we're always grateful for good weather. So the first thing on our agenda this morning is the recognitions, but two special recognitions and presentations. And the first one is the recognition of employees who have completed a degree or a certification program. So Director Holmes?
All right. For our PR team, can you guys go ahead and cue some music so we can get everybody in the proper mood? Thank you, thank you. All right. What we're going to do this morning, we are going to recognize our employees, as Commissioner Williams stated, that have completed either a certification program or a degree program. One of the things that Rockdale County does, we do actually offer tuition assistance for our employees. So we are super excited about all of the achievements of all of our employees. So what I'm going to do right now, I'm going to go ahead and start calling them up. We do have certificates that we would like to present, all of our graduates this morning. So the first name I am going to call up.
They can march in.
And I'm actually going to go ahead and call them up and order by department. Deputy Director Angie Hammer, Deputy Director Angie Hammer from General Services. And then last, General Services, Mary Lou Montalvo. All right, we can pause the music for just a second. Thank you. Congratulations on this awesome achievement. I do want to read, so Director Sue Sanders is not here, but she did give me something to read to you guys. So I definitely have to make sure that I read what, you know, about the certification. So, "The Certified Public Manager Program through the Carl Vincent Institute of Government in partnership with the National Certified Public Manager Consortium is invaluable for developing and retaining government managers to better serve their community. It is designed to improve the quality and efficiency of government agencies by developing the effectiveness and professionalism of managers. It also provides them with the tools needed to deliver quality services and improve the lives of citizens. This is an eight-month program that requires participants to attend classes and complete out of class assignments and projects. So both Deputy Director Hammer and Redman graduated as certified public managers on August 26, 2020. They attended the program concurrently, but in different consortiums. So they both could meet leaders from different governments and step outside of their comfort zones. Both leaders work in the General Services Department with Executive Director Sanders. Deputy Director Hammer oversees capital projects and facility maintenance and has been with Rockdale County for 14 years. Deputy Director Redman oversees Parks and Recreation and has been with the county for four and a half years. They are integral parts of our leadership team, and we're proud to have them onboard. Congratulations on your achievement." So that is from Director Sanders for both of her deputies this morning. If we can give them a round of applause. We have one more from this fabulous Department of General Services. Have you guys seen the work of Ms. Mary Lou Montalvo? Has anyone seen her work throughout Rockdale County? This building that we are sitting in right now, decorations, she actually recently completed the Event Planning Certificate through Emory University. She completed the certification on April of 2021, so she just completed that. Continues to bring value to Rockdale County. We are so proud of you as well. Congratulations, Ms. Mary Lou Montalvo. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any comments or anything you guys want to say? No? Okay. You're very, very welcome. All right. So now this is actually going to, we're going to go into Talent Management, my department. My deputy director is not here. She actually is attending a conference, an HR conference with SHRM this morning. But she completed her Certified Human Resource Manager Certification, also through the Carl Vincent Institute. And then we're going to bring up our very own, she is here this morning, Mary Ann Santos from Talent Management. She completed her Master's Degree in Public Administration. So one of the things I will tell you about Mary Ann is, since she's from my department, again, to complete this Master's Degree, she did that while she was working here full-time. Sorry. Okay. She actually completed this degree while working here full-time. So we do understand that's not an easy challenge. Mary Lou's goals is, Mary, I'm sorry, Mary Ann's goals is, Mary Ann wants to be an attorney. So she completed her MBA. She is planning to go to law school. She's actively studying right now to take that LSAT. And then hopefully, we will see her coming back serving the citizens of Rockdale County as an attorney. Congratulations, Mary Ann. So this next person I'm going to call up, and I'm going to call up her director first, Executive Director Mark Lewis, if you can come up here with me for a moment. And they're 20 this morning, you guys. I don't know if that was intentional or not. But we're going to have Ms. Tiffany Shepherd. She's from our Finance Department. She completed Level 1 Local Government Finance Office Program. So she has completed her Certification in Finance, and we are super proud of you this morning. Executive Director Lewis, anything you want to say?
No.
Okay. Well, congratulations on your achievement, and we definitely look forward to great things. And they are 20, you guys. I need a microphone to carry with me. Okay. So at this point, I'm super proud of this individual as well. I know he has worked really hard. And I'm going to call up from our E-911 Department Communications, Mr. Chris Morris. Chris has completed his Master's Degree, also in Public Administration. So congratulations, Chris. And we're going to have Director Morris come up and make a few comments.
Chris has been with us for over eight years now, and he completed this while he was here working full-time and working another full-time job outside of 911. He is a very popular dispatcher on the radio. His voice is known to a lot of people out there just by voice alone. And he is actually one of our fill-in supervisors when the supervisor is not, is on PTO. So he actually fills in the desk and runs the room. He is a very valued employee.
So at this time, what I'm going to do, and I see Chief Holmes is here, we are going to call up all of our remaining awardees. They are all coming out of our Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. So super excited about that. If they are here, if you can come on up, we're going to start with Detention Deputy Patsy Blanchard. Completed Master's Degree in Criminal Justice. Is Patsy Blanchard here this morning? Congratulations. That's okay. Deputy Lisa Thompson also completed her Master's Degree from the School of Counseling. Investigator Justin Figaro completed an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice. Lieutenant Joshua Daniel completed the PMP Certification, also in Criminal Justice. Greta Saurus, I was told, was not going to be able to make it this morning, but completed the PMP Certification, also in Criminal Justice. Detention Deputy Janelle Went completed her Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice. And Deputy Joshua Foster also completed the PMP Certification in Criminal Justice. So congratulations to all of our Rockdale County Sheriff's Office employees.
Sheriff, if you and your staff would like to come up and get a picture with everybody.
Just wanted to focus on and let everybody know again, Rockdale County definitely supports education with our employees. We want to make sure that the employees are participating in our Tuition Reimbursement Program. And also, as we talked about, we changed our name to Talent Management. The focus for us is career development. It is succession planning, it's making sure that our employees have career pathing. And thank you guys so very much for recognizing the employees this morning for these wonderful achievements. Thank you so much.
So it's, we love to encourage our employees to learn and to grow and to add those certifications and those degrees. It benefits them, but it benefits the county also with their newly-found expertise that they get from doing those courses. So thank you for presenting those, Director Holmes. Our next, our presentation is a 100th Year Anniversary Proclamation for the Daughters of the American Revolution for our Colonel John MacIntosh DAR Chapter here in Rockdale, Newton. So I will invite our chapter to come up. I would just preface it with, a few years before I retired, I started looking into some of my family history, and it was really pretty kind of fascinating. And I learned that one of my ancestors, Kate Moore Berry, had been very influential in the Battle of Cowpens in alerting the patriots there that the British were coming. And there's actually a DAR Chapter named after her in Spartanburg, South Carolina. And so when I retired, then I was interested in becoming a member and just finding out what DAR was more about. And I have to tell you that these women spend many hours of service to the community, to our veterans, and we appreciate what they're doing. And so the proclamation reads this. Whereas the Colonel John MacIntosh Chapter, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, has been a part of Rockdale County for 100 years, and whereas the Colonel John MacIntosh Chapter, NSDAR, has preserved the memory and the spirit of the men and women who achieved American independence by documenting its members' ancestors who served as sailors, soldiers, or civil officers in the United Colonies or states, or as a recognized patriot or rendered material aid thereto. And whereas the Colonel John MacIntosh Chapter, NSDAR, honors the men and women who have fought in the Vietnam War, the Korean Conflict, and more recent wars, during World War II, members engaged in Red Cross work and knitted sweaters and socks for the troops. And whereas the Colonel John MacIntosh Chapter, NSDAR, has honored the students of Rockdale County with History Awards, Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Awards, Good Citizen Awards, including the Dorothy H. Davis Scholarship, and giving U.S. flags to the schools of Rockdale County. And whereas Rockdale County commends the Colonel John MacIntosh Chapter, NSDAR, for their service to the members of the community for a century, and we support them as they continue to serve the community in the years to come. Now therefore, we as members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County do hereby proclaim October 11, 2021, as Colonel John MacIntosh, NSDAR, 100th Year Anniversary in Rockdale. In witness whereof, we have here and to set our hands and cause the official seal of Rockdale County to be affixed on this 28th day of September, signed by Chairman Oz Nesbit, Commissioner Sherri Washington, and Commissioner Doreen Williams. Okay, let's get a picture of the proclamation. Good job, buddy. Good job.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We're ready for the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nobody.
Okay. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes, August 24, 2021, September 9 and 11, 2021, and September 21, 2021. Why does that say September 9, 11?
Because it was 9 through the 11th, 9, 10th, and 11th.
Oh, that was, okay, that was our, okay, gotcha. Retrieve, yeah.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There is no unfinished business. We move to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as listed below. I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Lots of pages of them on consent. You're so fast. You're so speedy. It's my second name, Speedy. Let's get to the point.
Well, let's do this.
Okay, we are now to the regular agenda. Director Rutledge.
Thank you. Item 501 is rezoning case 2021-15. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 1959, 1969, 1971, 1975, 1985, and Zero Old Covington Highway Southeast from the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District and M1 Limited Industrial to MUR Mixed Use Residential Zoning District. To impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 502 is future land use case 2021-09. An ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's Comprehensive Plan as amended, so as to redesign a property located at 1959, 1969, 1971, 1975, 1985, and Zero Old Covington Highway Southeast from the commercial future land use category to the high-density residential future land use category. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading.
I move to, I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 503 is text amendment case 2021-23. An ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Sections 218-1 Permitted Use Table, Section 218-1 Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding mini warehouses and self-storage units. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 504 is text amendment case 2021-22. An ordinance to amend the text of Section 206-7 MUR Mixed Use Residential District, Section 214-1 Dimensional Standards of Zoning Districts, and Section 218-1 Table of Permitted Uses of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding the MUR Zoning Districts. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 505 is an ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Sections 202-4 Division of the County Intro Districts, Section 202-6 Relationship to the Comprehensive Plan, Section 206 Based Zoning Districts, Section 214-1 Dimensional Standards of Zoning Districts, Section 218-1 Table of Permitted Uses, Section 218-1 Supplemental Standards of Use and Development, Section 222-2 Parking Space Requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding the Unified College Cottage Development, CUD, and Cottage Home Tiny Homes. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading.
I move to refer this ordinance back to the Planning Commission for further consideration and input.
I second that motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 506 is rezoning case 2021-18. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 3362 Stanton Road Southeast from AR to R2 to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and to refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 507 is rezoning case 2021-17. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 2660 Old Salem Road Southeast from R1 to CRS to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and to refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 508 is rezoning case 2021-19. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning Zero Jeez Mill Road Northeast from R1 to M1 to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and to refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 509 is rezoning case 2021-20. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning 2966 and Zero Flat Shoals Road Southwest from AR to R1 to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and to refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 510 is text amendment request 2021-27. An ordinance to amend the text of Section 206-4 R2 Two-Family Duplex Residential District of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding structures with only two town home units. To repeal conflicting laws and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and to refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 511 is text amendment request 2021-24. An ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Sections 218-1 Permitted Use Table, Section 218-13 Standards of Use and Development, Sections 222-11 Parking Vehicles and Residential Districts of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding vehicle parking to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and to refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 513 is a resolution to comply with the provisions of Sections of OCGA-36-9-3H declaring certain county-owned real property surplus, authorizing the sale of the surplus county-owned narrow strip of land to the abutting property owner and for other purposes.
I move to approve this resolution as presented.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 514 are volunteer appointments. A is the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission to appoint Dr. Winterlin Norris Bowie. And B is the Rockdale County Development Authority to appoint Doug Sanders. It's my understanding that Dr. Bowie is with us this morning. I think she's here, okay.
Great. Let's go ahead and, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I move to approve these appointments as presented.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I say something? Yes.
Dr. Bowie, I've read your resume. I'm very impressed. And I know Dr. Sanders also, and I'm very impressed. I think that between the two of them, we're going to have an outstanding Planning Commission and Development Authority with the talent that has stepped up to serve in these positions. So thank you very much for your service, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And I was going to ask you if you would like to say anything.
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your, like Commissioner Washington said, stepping up to serve the county. The Planning Commission is extremely important.
Very important.
And we rely on their information that they gather in making decisions.
He's here if you'd like to say something, anything about the, our director, Bones Johnson, finding out.
Oh, oh, okay. Would you like to say something? Welcome, Dr. Bowie, to the Planning Commission.
Good morning, Madam Commissioners.
Good morning.
Dr. Bowie, I think I made it before. Had a very interesting meeting a few months ago, but thank you for your service to the community. Thank you for volunteering for the Planning Commission. As you know, as Commissioner Williams said, we work together closely. We will see you monthly as we sort out some of the proposals and recommendations. So if you need anything, as always, reach out, tell me what you've done before, so.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We appreciate our volunteers and their service to Rockdale County. Okay, next.
Item 515 is a service provider agreement between Rockdale County, Georgia, and Viewpoint Health. This is for the Opening Doors to Recovery Program in the amount of $75,622. This is a one-year term, October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022, and this is submitted for ratification.
I move to ratify this contract as presented.
I second the motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And let me just make a comment about this contract. We've been working on this for about a year. And what this contract provides is there will be a team of three navigators. One person will be a clinician. One person will be a peer, certified peer specialist, meaning that they have lived experience with criminal justice or recovery from addiction or mental health issues. And the third person is a family member of And the third person is a family member of someone who, and they are certified also, for those who have had a family member in the criminal justice system or mental health or addiction. What this team will do is they will provide wraparound services for those who volunteer to participate in the program. Let me say that. They will provide wraparound services to individuals either coming out of jail, who are encountering law enforcement. And they will work closely with the sheriff's office. And this is a program that was done in Chatham County in Savannah a number of years ago, and it made a huge difference in the recidivism rate. It went way down when they had these intense wraparound services. And so we're looking forward to that. We know that there are some who really need that in Rockdale County. And I'm really sad to say that one of those who could have used that passed away a week or so ago. And he was known in the community to the sheriff's office. We, you know, we had a meeting and his name came up. We don't want to lose anyone because we know that people can change, and they can get into recovery if they choose to. They have to, they have to want it. But they, it is possible, and providing the necessary supports can make a huge difference to these people. I was going to save this for my comments at the end, but I will tell you that September is Recovery Month, Recovery Awareness Month. And we had two major events in the last week and a half. A week and a half ago, we had a motorcycle ride for recovery and speakers and food and all kinds of things over at the courthouse parking lot. We had a huge crowd of people. If you could hear the stories of those who are in recovery and have really worked hard and fought to remain in recovery, it's extremely inspiring. Friday night, we had our Year of the Peer Awards banquet that was just phenomenal. It was put on almost entirely by peers who, some employees of Rockdale County now, some who were volunteering their time and their talents. But we honored a couple dozen people for their service, for the changes they've made in their lives. I think the most impressive is listening to their stories. It was an Oscar Awards kind of thing, and so they came up, got a trophy, and then they said a few words. And those few words were, again, very inspiring. And you realize that recovery is possible, but it is hard, and they need support. So I couldn't be more excited about this contract and ready to get started. And we will start training those members of that navigator team as soon as they are hired or appointed by Viewpoint Health. And they will be trained by Nora Haynes, who led the Opening Doors to Recovery Project in Chatham County, and Bill Carruthers, who is our program developer here. Those are my comments. Okay, so next, we have public comment. And I have, okay, Lila?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me how, your last name?
Healan.
Lila A. Healan, who, we will have you come up front and address us. Thank you. Did you need to read the?
I can, Madam Vice Chair, if you'd like me to.
Oh, yes, go ahead and share the disclaimer first.
It'll take just a second, okay? As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the vice chair, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I'm here about how my taxes have increased this year. Last year, my taxes were 89.39. This is property taxes. This year, they were $216.41. About five years ago, they were under $50. I live in a low-income area. I'm a woman who's widowed, living on Social Security. I am over 65. And another thing is about, I want to know why they decided to put some storm, to put the Stormwater Runoff bill with taxes when my husband was told that it wasn't a tax. If you have made it into a tax, I think that might be taxation without representation. It's a service that I didn't ask for, and I shouldn't have to pay it because it hasn't benefited me. And some people might say that it has benefited me. But every time they have come and tried to do something, fix something that was not, that was not broken, they ended up making it worse. I'm talking about the people who work with the Stormwater runoff. And that's all I've got to say.
Well, thank you. Yes, and that's why your tax bill went up. The tax, the stormwater is still a fee on there. Your house is, cannot be, you know, taken back because you don't pay the stormwater fee. But, but it is, you know, it's one of those things that's infrastructure, that you may not see how it benefits you, but it keeps roads from flooding. It keeps bridges from washing out. It, it makes a difference in our community, and our infrastructure is old. And so we are trying to get it repaired.
I know the infrastructure is old because on the street where I live, they seem to not care too much about my neighborhood because I'm in a low-income neighborhood. And the streets there need fixing. If I thought they were going to start fixing, I wouldn't mind paying it. And the road, the place, on Sigmund Road, there is not enough room for the traffic that goes through there.
So, so transportation and roads would be a different department than stormwater. Yeah, so.
But Madam Vice Chair, if you don't mind, we could set up time for you to come in and meet with appropriate staff, and we could answer all of your questions for you. If you don't mind hanging around, I could talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
And also, Sigmund Road, we're doing a revit of a huge expansion on Sigmund Road. I know you see all of the cars and everything that are, I mean, all of the construction on the road, on Sigmund Road, when you go in and out of Sigmund Road.
I don't get out much.
Oh, well, there's going to be a lot of changes on Sigmund Road. I live off of Sigmund Road. So that if, if you were to go down Sigmund Road as if you were going to 20, Highway 20, you'll see a whole lot of, of construction cars and a lot of construction. We are widening Sigmund Road, and that should help a lot with those things. But I am very interested in your concerns about the stormwater. And as Director Rutledge has indicated, I would like for you to sit down and speak with somebody because I, I don't want anybody to think that because they live in a low-income neighborhood, we're not attentive to their needs. That's not it at all. Our stormwater infrastructure is over 40 years old, and that's almost 40 years of trying to catch up the entire county. So I do believe that they have a plan. We just have to let you know where you are on the plan. Also, with your taxes, if you're referring to your tax bill, the mileage rate that was given to you on your tax, on the, not the bill, but what is that? The assessment notice? That's going to be different than the tax bill that you sent because we did a rollback rate. We adjusted the mileage rate. So your taxes shouldn't go up very much on the county side. I don't know about any, do you live in the city?
No, ma'am. I just live in the county.
Okay, so it shouldn't, when you get the final bill, it shouldn't adjust too much.
I think this is the final.
Yeah, I think we did receive the final bills. Maybe mine's in the mail. Okay, well, I would be interested in seeing exactly what happened with, why yours went up that much with the rollback rate in place.
Well, it could have been the assessment. You could have appraised higher this year. Your property could have appraised higher. Also, the two-thirds of your property tax bill is going to be that of the school board, and.
Oh, I don't, high school board.
Okay. So, but in addition to, like Commissioner Williams was stating to you, your stormwater fee is on the bill as well as the rest of your, if you have a street light or anything else that might be on there. But we could look at that one-on-one and be able to help you understand the tax bill a little bit more, the stormwater, and it sounds like you have some issues maybe within your roads and your subdivision as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming this morning, Ms. Healan. And do please stay after. All right, I have no more red comment cards, so it is time for board comment.
Yes, I don't have a lot. We, I wanted to say how much fun I had Sunday at the concert series. We had a good time, great weather, great camaraderie. Next time, I'm going to teach you how to do the electric slides.
People have tried. I really enjoy watching.
We'll do it in private and so that you can come out with everybody and surprise everybody. But that was a great family event. Everybody enjoyed it, so that was very good. You also mentioned that this month was, is Recovery Month. And I love, if anybody gets the opportunity to go to the courthouse, they have paintings all over the courthouse to celebrate recovery, and those are excellent. So that is also good. Also, we are gearing up for the first of our small business mixers, and that will be October 12th. That's going to be at the Reserve. So if you have a small business in Rockdale County, please, please come. It's from 6:00 to 9:00. Bring your business cards. It's an opportunity for small businesses to just meet and mingle in a festive environment. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So I already spoke about Recovery Month in the Year of the Peer. And my, my other comment was about the concert series, the summer concert series. It was so much fun on Sunday afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00 at a Costly Mill. It couldn't have been nicer weather. The first two concerts were so hot that this one was really pleasant and enjoyable, and the band was good. We have one more concert this year, and that will be October 24th out at Costly Mill Park from 4:00 to 6:00. And I, do you remember who the band is for that?
Corey Brown Band.
Oh, thank you. Corey Brown Band. So we invite you to come. I would suggest you get there early because when I got there just after 4:00, the line to get into the park was so long, I ended up taking my husband to home and then coming back after people had gotten in. So definitely get there early. There was, my understanding is there was about 700 people there. And it was phenomenal. And the park is big enough, and you can hear the band enough that people were spaced out. You didn't have to sit near anybody. You could social distance and enjoy the music. There were food trucks. You could buy food. Some people, I noticed, brought their own and had a picnic. It's just a fun, fun thing. So we invite you to get involved in some of the activities for Rockdale County, and it's free.
They also had trucks for those of us who like a little bit more than sodas.
Oh. I took my Diet Coke with me.
But they did, and the food trucks were outstanding.
Director Rutledge, any need for an executive session?
No, Madam Vice Chairman. That's it.
Okay, we are adjourned.